Community. Approving of the agenda, can't be any changes?
Let's see, just wanted to know that. Dave is not able to attend tonight and also city. In our city attorney counsel.
You have a motion to perfect and approve the agenda? All right Duncan?
Yes.
Harlinger?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, next is citizens speak, this is time for anybody in the audience that would like to take a few minutes to address the council on any. Item that is or anything that is not an agenda item tonight, is there anybody?
I just had a question. Um, you have a closed session tonight?
Yes.
So. Well, the chambers before the after seventeen will eighteen through twenty-four be under closed session?
Uh, it will open back up after item seventeen. Uh, with that, I think we could probably move nineteen through twenty-four. Uh, ahead of it. If there's no concerns. We'll need to keep eighteen after seventeen.
Okay. Any idea how long the closed session?
Eighteen, yeah, eighteen has to be after seventeen, but if you wanted to move nineteen through twenty-four after sixteen.
Oh, after sixteen, yes, sorry, after sixteen, yes, sorry, but. Um, not certain how long seventeen, seventeen.
Thank you.
Would you like us to move others above?
I'd like to hear what everybody has to say after.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and just leave it stand then and. We'll round everything out then after uh, number seventeen. Uh, next we have the consent agenda, so it's approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on June nineteenth, approval of the list of bills, there's quite a few without having the first July meeting. Uh, treasures, reports and transfers, quite a few building permits and one beer and liquor license for Rizitas.
I just, I just want to make a note that everybody's aware of, we have um. We have on this list of bill, the payment to Gail Lindem into forty-five thousand dollars and that was a payment that um, was part of a. A longstanding developer's agreement for the um, for the remodeling of the building across the street, he's met all the criteria. The agreements have been signed, we have occupancy permit for the residential units. And so that payment is on there, I just want to bring that attention because it's kind of not our usual bill. And then what happens now is that as those commercial units are um. Rented or leased, a building permit will come back for those units. Just want to make everybody aware of what that payment is because that project started um, several years ago and not everybody was on council or understand or remember what that is.
Any issues with the beer and liquor license?
No issues.
I'll move to.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second. All right Duncan? Yes. Harlinger?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, I take this down to public works, director report Scotty.
Well, uh, we still have the boring crew in town working. They will be here tomorrow most of the day and then they're gonna skedaddle through the long weekend. Last week they did hit a water main uh, at the middle school on the receding. And now it wasn't uh. Wasn't for their lack of trying to find it, uh, it was uh, stuff that wasn't on our maps that we need to hide her. To it, so we in fact didn't have. And they just. Smack her right right through. Uh, we're undergoing a sewer repair up at Short Street, Highway one. Week and a half ago. It was discovered, or two weeks ago, it was discovered uh, a hole in the roadway. And of course, there was a uh, void spot underneath the pavement, we had uh, some barrels sitting on it while locates were called in contractor lined up. Uh, which excavating arrived um, Tuesday. Yesterday and started excavating. In that time, we were waiting for the contractor, we also ran a camera up the sanitary sewer that's right there. Um, and it did show a. Defect in the piping. And also some. Mud still at the bottom of the pipe. We started digging and then we found that a storm sewer was above that. It was also damaged and. Was sucking. Material into that, it was half full. Uh, we cut out the bad section of that, continued down and now. Where we found the problem of the sanitary sewer. This looks like it was. Back in the two thousands when we installed a new water main. Looks like it's, it's a re. Uh, a repair that went bad from back then. Uh, we plan to have the. Roadway rock back tomorrow. But we will not have the pavement on top, but we will have the roadway fully open, it'll just be a gravel patch for now.
With it being a defective pipe, is there anything we can do to go back there, it's so, it's been so long, it's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and let you know that uh, we did hire a new employee in public works. His name is Jacob C and will start on July twenty-ninth. And uh, he comes with uh. Some experience in municipal public works. Also as a. Train diesel mechanic. He has a two-year degree in diesel mechanic, so.
Great.
He's gonna be a great fit. Hope you guys get a chance to move. That's all I got.
All right, thanks Scott. All right, next Liz, library report.
Summer reading is wrapping up, it's been hugely. You still have until Wednesday, July thirty-first, and turn in your slips for private and a chance to win the grand prize. That is on Wednesday and then on Thursday, August first, we'll be doing our annual Dino that does program. The library will close at five so that then we can set up outside, bring out all those big dinosaurs from the basement. And have lots of different activities for families and kids of all ages to get to enjoy Jack Newzall's amazing collection. And thank you to public works who will be helping us remove our door jam so that we can get those things out and then back in. So that will be Thursday at five thirty, um, one thing I want to bring your attention to, we are now offering the adventure pass through the library, you might have heard of it from other libraries in the area. Um, what this allows you to do with your library card, each person over eighteen years old can check out one path each calendar year. For each of these attractions and you can go for free then and try it out. Des Moines Children's Museum, the Science Center of Iowa, which is also in Des Moines, and then the Quad Cities Fun Bundle. Which actually gets you into the Putnam Museum, the Niaby Zoo and the Botanical Society. So you go online, make your reservation, in um, the case of the two Des Moines ones, you'll just print off your passes and you're on your way. For the Quad Cities Fun Bundle, it's actually a card that will come and check out from us. But we think this is a great opportunity for the community to try these different events and we hope that people take advantage of that. And then finally, we are interviewing for our teen services librarian, we started those interviews this week and hope to finish up next week and we hope to find a good shift for. Our summer library clerks continue to help so much and we're so grateful to them.
Thanks Liz. All right, thanks, uh, Dave, the city engineer report.
Yes, good evening, a few things to go over, so uh. August sixth, there'll be a meeting coming up for the two D draft data for the flood mapping that D N R has been working on. This will be a little bit more involved in the recent FEMA mapping that was updated, uh, there was a statewide effort for that, but D N R is doing a separate issue. With two D and that'll be a tool that communities can use for flood mapping and doing a little bit more interactive um. Engagement, so they want to roll that out, get some feedback, I'll be attending on behalf of the city for that. And then also, uh, last week, Midl Iowa Watershed Group met and they had their kickoff meeting. Um, for planning and setting goals for the watershed, uh, some of the things that they talked about were uh, water quality, obviously, uh, erosion, uh, not only from a stream, but also just from um. Farmland, uh, when it's not being used in the fall and the winter time, is there cover crops that can be put on and some different things to try to. Eliminate some of the erosion or reduce the erosion that's been occurring in the watershed, uh, that obviously has an impact on Corvina Lake. And that was discussed that uh, there's a pretty heavy sediment load that goes to the lake and it's causing a lot of siltation which impacts recreation. So good discussion on that, um, a fair amount of discussion as well on flood control and then also, uh, there were a few communities that were concerned about um. Quantity of water that's available uh, in drought conditions and what can be done in the watershed to try to help that as well, so. Uh, good kickoff meeting on, on that um, effort and uh, there'll be some minutes that come out of that and some additional meetings to try to uh. Refine those a little bit and put together some action items. Uh, the only other issue I had to report on would be the uh. Phase two uh, Trail Ridge that pavement is complete, uh, they're working to try to get the utilities put in the. Electric, uh, gas, all that stuff to get that wrapped up, so we should see something shortly on final plat approval and get that project complete. Um, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thanks Dave. All right, uh, that was Kevin and B, uh, not here, we'll move down to old business, uh, number thirteen, so this ordinance number forty-seven, the water and sewer ordinance revisions. Uh, this is council discussion, possible action on a second reading. Ordinance forty-seven.
Just to recap, this was a bit of um, ordinances um, that in the water and sewer sections that Scott had taken some time. Over the slower months this spring and identified some updates that were needed, those have been through and reviewed by the utilities committee. And the first reading was in um, June and then this would be the second.
Any questions from science from anybody?
I'll move to pre-ordinance forty-seven.
Duncan?
Yes.
Harlinger?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, that takes us down to new business, the senior housing concept, uh, council discussion, possible action on proposed senior housing concept, senior housing. Insultants.
I'll just give a little, just a quick brief intro that um. Um, Alan Phillips and Mark Fiegas have um, visited with me a few times with some ideas of senior house. And so the idea that they're presenting tonight is they're looking for council feedback, it's obviously untimely and expensive to go through a full-blown um, site plan process. This would also require a possible rezone, so through our conversations and through the plans that you're have tonight, they're really looking for that feedback from the city council. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on the location and I'll turn it over to Alan and Mark, these are the two lots in Fox Ridge. Where we've seen multiple um. Concepts come through and site plans come through, this would be directly across from um. Memorial by Michael's in the south and then to the uh, east of the storage unit, so those two lots on the corner, just to make sure everyone sees the location. All right, so.
I'll just start out, thanks Kami, Alan Phillips, so Mark and I are actually here as board members of Sloan County Housing. So, or you guys may or may not know, started in nineteen eighty-four. As a not-for-profit. They built their first building just south of the Catholic Church in two thousand, built eight units and then in two thousand eight um. We build another twelve units, I've been on the boards since oh seven. That is low-income senior housing and with that then. We use Iowa Finance Authority money to build those at that time. The board is now trying to take a different direction and looking at a fifty-five plus senior housing, private pay scenario. Although we are running as a not-for-profit, we're trying to keep. You know, the rents as low as possible, we don't know the rent because we're trying to decide. You know, what can we do here, so the first proposal is looking at twenty units. And then a future twenty units on this property, we've hired um, sole lane architects. To kind of get us through this design phase. They help us with some other projects, so they're familiar with us, they've also helped with the. Tire station, so they were familiar with Kami and so on, so. We started with them. And I think we have a pretty good design and we're trying to figure out. You know, is there rezoning that's needed, um. What's our potential path here? And then uh, basically, you know, we would look at, okay, where does it take the finance this, uh, we do have the property under contract. Basically with two contingency, your approval and then bank financing.
Looking through with the, the concept, uh, definitely. Like it, it looks like a nice, nice building, like it's pleasing to the eye with it, uh, when other plans have come through. Uh, parking is always one thing that, that comes up, uh, I don't know if it falls out on the plans, the number, I guess there's thirty-nine parking units uh, for the twenty to set meet.
It's three, right now our multifamily needs three parking spaces per um. Per unit, is that right Dave? Pretty sure it's, it's three spaces, um. In, you know, the, in a situation like this, the council certainly has the ability to waive a certain amount of parking spaces, that's been done in the past for other projects, but. Uh, three spaces per um, unit is what I believe it is. And that, that would be a little short of that.
How many short would they be?
Have you got that far yet?
Yeah, so in.
Garage is included in our account.
Okay.
Okay, just historically, we're. Understanding that the parking requirements are typically because you figure that you're gonna have two car families. Um, this is not going to be a two-car family, there's most of these apartments will be for a single individual, um, and. Two percent of the government share percentage probably won't have a car at all, um, when you use public transportation, um, the reason that this is a great site is because it's close to everything and so on, so.
My question, twelve garages, this was on your. And it's twenty units, so we have twelve garages and an office and apron in front and then a. Apron in front of the building as well.
So you have outdoor, you have outdoor parking as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Any initial thoughts?
Well, as I said, with other proposals come to us, living. I live with a windflower on down as you go in and off this main road. I would prefer to see access to this property not be off of windflower. Going east and west, windflower going north and south. Seems to me to be a better way to get it out of this property just because of. Traffic in and around uh, memorials by Michael, um. And then the short street that's right behind it, this property that you're. It, it carries a lot of traffic and uh. I don't know if that's possible, but it's just my thought, uh, is, you know, take, take a look at it and see if. If that can be, um. And it goes along with the proposal we have a. You know, when you turn on a windflower, somebody's looking at developing that, it's commercial and. So windflower. Carries a lot of traffic the way it is right now, uh, not the way you would access it anyway. But before you get into the real residential section of. Uh, windflower there on that. Walk on it, uh, walking path area, uh. That, yeah, other than that, I like this concept a lot better than others, certainly.
Cool, I mean, what initial thoughts?
Um, this about parking, maybe something integrated in the agreement that, you know, this is a one. One-car apartment or something to arrange so that you can actually tell residents that.
Right.
You know, we're not going to be flooding the streets with extra cars with this development, uh, I like the concept though and I just love the work that they do and I think it's a major service, so. Um, if we could take care of traffic concerns, since we're early in the process, see if there's a way to not be too much extra traffic onto that road. And if we can take something to address the parking. Just to make sure that we're not overflowing anyone, I would be supportive.
Uh, John, please, Andrew, any thoughts?
John, I'm, I'm with, I'm with those guys, I, I, I like the concept of it as well, um, I just, I just want to make sure that we don't, uh. You know, I think that, I think our biggest thing with everything that's. All the concepts that's come in over there have, the biggest issue has been, we want to make sure that the parking is taken care of, um. Doug lives over there, I have, I have uh, my, my, I run my business out of there, so I'm, I'm over there a lot and I know the, the, the. The traffic and parking concerns, so just want to make sure that we, that we make sure that we. Don't overload, overload the area with it, so that, that's probably my biggest concern with it is to make sure that uh, we, we fall in line and, and I know that. We have a set standard for the number of, of uh. Parking lots per unit, um, with this, with this concept, it's a little, it's a little bit different of a monster just because. You're not gonna have the same traffic as you would if you had. Uh, a, a two-story or three-story apartment complex, so, um, I just, just want to make sure that we, we do address that, make sure that everybody's comfortable, um. On council and, and in the area with, with the parking.
I'd say you made a great point with the, with it being a fifty-five plus.
Yes.
You aren't gonna have a family of five, so, and I, and you mean, I would be curious like with either other facilities or things like that, if. There could be a comparison maybe as far as parking if either uh, beyond by the, the church or if there's other facilities.
Yep.
You know, in the area or state, um, just something to compare that to.
The other night for uh, our, for our board directors, maybe for example, there's twenty units there that are full, those fourteen cars. That would snatch out of time.
Right.
So people were obviously traveling, but there isn't no more than one per. The thing that did come up at one point, we didn't know how to handle, is the whole golf cart concept, because I think what they're moving towards as well is. Maybe I don't need a car, but I'd like to have a golf cart. And a garage is what some of the residents have come to us, that could see that as well. As their potential option.
Would you be willing to adjust site plans if necessary, you know, you get feedback and they say, I'm gonna want that garage for my golf cart or a big enough garage for a car and a car?
Yeah, I think, you know, ultimately, we're just trying to come up with this small level of words, you know, that fits the neighborhood. As well as fits the seniors and so on, I mean, that's, that's ultimately what we're trying to do in a not-for-profit uh, process. Um, and so again, you guys were right on, the fifty-five plus, we're not looking for multiple vehicles, in fact. I don't, I don't see anyone bringing more than one, in fact. We would, I'll charge for somebody that wants the garage, we'll set a price of whatever, you know, per stall, but.
Have you had a chance to, I know it's early in the process, I don't expect, have you had a chance to talk to the neighbors at all, I know there have been some concerns on the other concepts. Again, this, my assumption of this plan is that the, the neighbors would have less of a concern because it is housing versus. Industrial or all these different things, I don't want to speak for them because I haven't spoken with them at all, I don't know if you've had a chance to.
We, I mean, really our communication has been, can honestly to kind of discuss that or interested to see what Steve's feedback. He is obviously living in the neighborhood, um, and understanding that concept of it. The truth is when we went to Kami and said, hey, where is there a lot in Solon that we can build a fifty-five plus not-for-profit, is there someplace else that would be a good fit? It came back to, hey, this is a good location with walking distance and, you know, some things, uh. So that's kind of where we're at, we didn't want to take it any further other than. You know, basically sign an agreement with Sloan State Bank that owns it.
Right.
Met with Bridge Bank and they're all in favor of loaning us money, right? Board of Directors is all excited about trying to get it done as well as our property manager. And then we basically signed with the architect, say, hey, give us a plan, and what they did is they gave us a blend of. Assistant livings that we build with them and basically projects that they've been doing and she'd wrap it with scope and. And that's what, you know, ultimately you're seeing in front of you, a mix of basically one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
In our conversations, you know, when we look at these lots, there's own commercial, there's own commercial general, virtually. Most of the plans that have come through the council have either been had an industrial tone or they've been high-density through. Uh, density is something that's probably is gonna need to be part of the conversation. As far as, you know, what kind of density the council's comfortable with on that corner. Um, but the comp plan does say that if there's any commercial property not deemed suitable for commercial, it should re, re, revert to residential. And this may be. That kind of scenario. One of the questions we had early on was, do we actually need to rezone? Uh, I spent some time with Dave Checkinger and Kevin and our ultimate decision on that is yes. And the reason is that while we, this does have some. Quote, "commercial flair" to it. We don't want to set up a precedent for future high-density uh, type housing in commercial and other areas of town, this is kind of a special circumstance. So we're, because we don't want to set a precedent. We, we, it would be, you know, we would require that this would be rezoned to our three residential. Which would not create spot zoning because there's our three residential directly um, to the east. So we're not gonna create any spot zoning situation there, so there's a lot of things to, about this project. That do make sense, we haven't gotten any, we have, this is really very clever, we haven't looked at open space landscaping, any of Rose details yet, really. What, what they wanted to do is just really get a feel of what you thought about the concept before they went to that next level of detail. Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean. And the truth is, we're spending the resident, we're still on the money, we're gonna spend money and then go, oh, we don't have, we can't do this, so we wanted to get your approval to say. Yeah, keep going, this concept makes sense. Because ultimately, we're gonna have to raise some cash, we've, we've been doing a great job paying off loans and saving up some cash to be able to do this with our existing properties. And again, oh, we're gonna be doing this as a not-for-profit, so. We'll be looking for some neat opportunities, but one of the things we'll have to do is keep that cost structure low, but build something beautiful at the same time.
I think.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is one of the. The fifty-five plus is one of the. Uh, it's. Most needed kind of housing. That's out there right now, right, like there's not a lot of um, senior housing that, that is becoming available as our community continues to age. They're not, they're not keeping up with. And not you by any means, but just the, just the building of these types of. Facilities have not, have not been able to keep up with, with what the demand is, is looking for, for, for this type of. People and, and age group.
And I think you've probably seen it even in Solon, they want a car that comes available, whether it's across the street or whatever. There might, I mean, some of the residents are probably fifty-five plus and like the walkiest stuff. And things like that.
I think that our current, um, the current property, we are hundred percent full, um, we have nine on the waiting list. And.
After four.
Yeah, I mean, when one comes open, they're, it doesn't last long, whoever's first in line. And that's part of it, if you want to do this, is to spell that.
It definitely feels like it would fit in the, just to kind of recap with it, it sounds like the concerns around parking and maybe street entrance with it, but overall. It feels like it's generally well, well-liked. So as far as next steps, Kami, what would next steps?
Next steps would be for um. Uh, Dave Checkinger, Scott and I to sit down with Alan at the park and talk a little bit more of those logistics of. The actual entrances, parking, um, that will give them some feedback to take back to their engineers so they can begin to start having those site plan discussions and planning. And then prior to um, any formal, formal submittal, which would be the rezoning, we would have another meeting where we'd have those actual exhibits to look at. Before you submit to planning and zoning, so a couple more meetings with city staff earlier are kind of our steps.
And our only timeline push is uh, basically our agreement with Sloan State. And our only timeline push is, uh, basically our agreement with Swan State Bank. You know, it's contingent upon us saying, here's what we're doing, right? And we, we obviously don't want to purchase the, the ground until we're ready to move forward.
Absolutely.
That's, that's where we're coming from, just to get that through.
True.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming in and going over that.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it much. Uh, that takes us down to item fifteen, site plan amendment, uh, two hundred East Main.
Right, we have a site plan amendment from Al Wells and this is for a, uh. It's a fence, it's an eight-by-thirty-foot fence that's. Uh, it's gonna run, it's gonna run north and south, but it's gonna be on the east side of the property. You should have some photos standing there. Plans, um, this is a commercial property and whenever a commercial, whatever a commercial property. Whenever a building permit is required, we do consider that a minor site plan amendment. Dave and I both reviewed this, felt it should have council approval. Uh, this is, uh, pretty straightforward. There's some photos in, in the packet. Um, Dave, what, did you have any comments you wanted to share?
Yeah, just taking a few comments, Kami. So the, the first question that I have is that this site plan does still show. On Main Street, a thickened black line where the previous application had a, a shorter fence there. This application, I just wanted to be clear, does not cover that. It only covers the eight-foot-high by thirty-foot-long. That is, uh, in line with the brick wall on the, on the building, uh, just. Just east of Palmer House, uh, south of the entrance to that. So looking at that, uh, we do have a few things. I believe the property line, we haven't surveyed it, but it appears to be along the face of that brick wall. And we do have a requirement in our code that we have to have the fence one foot off the crop, property line. That's, uh, section one sixty-seven oh five two D. So that's, that's one item that I wanted to make sure that was addressed. Then the other was, uh, whether or not there was going to be any sort of. Anchorage, uh, on this that would rely on that wall. Uh, it appears that this would be anchored at the base and be a freestanding. Fence, but I just wanted to confirm that as well. So we, we haven't had much conversation on this with the applicant. These are just points that we wanted to, to make. And then we also wanted to be sure that this doesn't, um, create any issues with access, uh, for anything on that property by doing so. Realizing that if we keep it one foot on the property side of, uh, stables, it should not be on their property and shouldn't be an issue. But didn't want to overlook that or see any issue with potential. For that to create a problem with snow, um, on the backside of that. It looks like there's a deck there. And this would partially enclose that, so there really shouldn't be a potential for it, but something that we should. Take heed of just so we don't create a problem and, uh, encourage the dialogue between the applicant and the adjacent property owner. So this doesn't become a problem.
How's everything? You want to go through and talk?
Pretty straightforward.
During the building permit process, that will be evaluated by the, you know, the, the wind load, all those things. With anchors, uh, what Dave's referring to is anchoring, make sure he's not, this fence isn't getting anchored to the adjacent building. We need stand-alone anchors, um, but those things will be evaluated during the building permit process.
What was that?
Those things will be evaluated during the building permit process. This approval is just, uh, allow the building. Permit to go forward.
Any questions?
Concerns?
I'd agree with that with the permitting process taken care of. Uh, we have a motion to approve the site plan amendment for two hundred East Main.
Now, I'll move to. Move the site plan amendment for two hundred East Main Street.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, that takes us down to item sixteen, resolution twenty-four twenty-four. Setting a date for the public hearing on designation of all the expanded sole urban renewal area and on the urban renewal plan amendment.
So we, that, the original intent was to have that public hearing tonight. There was a mix-up, um, with getting that submitted to the paper, so. Uh, all the steps necessary to have the, uh, uh, hearing tonight happen, except for getting it to the paper and timely. So, uh, working with Dorsey and Whitney, um, this resolution lets us push that back to the next meeting. And this sets the public hearing date for, uh, August setup.
I'll move to group resolution number twenty-four.
I'll second. All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel? All right, that takes us to the closed session portion.
You want to do the.
You're gonna do the.
No business?
Other business.
Yes, we'll jump down to, uh, the other, other business, so, uh, council committees. Uh, we're gonna do the. We'll do, uh, nineteen through twenty-four and then we'll jump back. Uh, so, the council committee, so, uh, streets, uh, Prairie, Prairie Rose Lane, update?
I've got an update.
Well, what we were just gonna, what they're, the plan is to evaluate the asphalt versus the concrete, right?
So we, uh, we're looking at the possibility, instead of pouring back a completely new concrete street. To utilize the existing urban gutter that's there, cutting out the bad concrete and inland it with asphalt. Um, committee looked at it and felt that the aesthetics of it, um. Mesh. Yeah, meshes, you know, well, with, with what we're gonna have, especially with the cost savings. We could potentially see. You know, the, the substantial cost savings going this way. City engineer is currently reviewing, uh, that and incorporating it into some bid specs.
My only response to that would be is that, that the avenue we go if it was set in front of somebody's one-point-two-million-dollar home in Windmill Estates. Or would that be the same rationale we'd use if it was set in front of an eight, nine, or a thousand-dollar home in Windmill Estates? Yep, because that's the question we're gonna get from residents over there, to slap an asphalt in there rather than putting a concrete street back in.
That was, that was my, that was my comment on it, is if it was in front of my house, then I would be okay with it because it matches up with what we're doing in the rest of the. The community.
Where are we doing this, the rest?
With that, that's, that's what we're doing with the curb and gutter. As, as we go through and we're, we're redoing curb and gutter in the rest of the, the town, it's, right?
Asphalt, those streets we're putting down?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're putting.
I think we're, we're addressing the, the drainage issue and putting in curb and gutter. Uh, it's concrete, curb and asphalt streets.
Okay. Cause that was, that was a question I asked.
I, I, I would just encourage that as we go forward, and that's the plan, and not come back and rehash it again. If we decide that's the way to go, then that's the way we go anywhere in town.
Agreed, agreed.
And the reason we wanted to bring this up is council already approved those improvements because this is a change. This also. Uh, this, as Scott says, significant cost saving.
True.
And. The plan was to divert some of those funds to so much needed updates to that R and A parking lot. That would otherwise not get done, um. Is that some?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so just want to make sure that the council's aware that. There's been something dialogue that's happening after the approval, and again. More, more to come, but just wanted to make you aware of the conversations that, uh, Streets Committee's been having on this.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, we have no update from utilities, uh, or finance, from personnel. We will cover that, uh, during the closed, uh, session. Looks like no updates on the building needs growth and growth, uh, committee. For a date to be set for the next police committee meeting. Kami, have you heard anything back from, uh, Sheriff Kunkel on the draft that he chaired?
He's still waiting for, uh, comments from the, uh, county attorney's office, so as soon as we get those back, well.
Uh, and then the last committee, the school, uh, or city school, uh, committee meeting on the SRNA twenty-eight E draft.
And then you, that, that, that committee is gonna include, um, Steve Duncan.
Yeah, I assume you have you on that as well, John.
What's the twenty-eight E agreement?
Gonna have Adam Hales, Ben and Jamie.
Yeah, that's right.
Just their two representatives.
I forgot to tell you that.
Okay, yeah, there you go, okay.
Of course, staff, you know, city staff and school staff.
That's my bad. All right, Don.
I've done a lot of paperwork. Uh, I dug up all the old agreements, though Davis passed those, so we're all working from the same draft and. And all the past agreements that were, so I think we're, we're in a good place. It's just getting, uh, getting some. Um, getting our, getting each of our ideas in there and then we'll sit down and we'll need to kind of look at some of those rougher, you know, first rough drafts.
Yeah, I think our, our combined meeting spurred this on a little bit. I think everybody all of a sudden got up to speed, you know, both the Board of Education, even some of the people in this room, so. I think that's, uh, that's helped a great deal.
And Brody's already, um, uh, initiated that shared calendar.
Right, yeah.
Uh, next city clerk, please, Susan. Uh, Cam, city administrator.
Um, just wanna just, you know, have these days moving, things are great, it's gonna be fun, loving everything we get, so.
Great.
Of course, thanks to Public Works, we know nothing happening without Public Works. And all the work they put in.
Right, council comments?
I'll have one, this, this question, the, the electric. Scooters that kids are, are, are riding in, in town, are those to be on the sidewalk or can they be in the street? Do we have any guideline on age with them or?
We don't, there are, this, this is a bit of a topic and I believe. Just adopted a policy on that, so I can take a look at what they.
Yeah.
They don't fall under any of our, uh, codes. We don't have anything on.
I was just wondering if I, if I did say something, because we've got kids that are eight, nine years old that are riding. These motorized, and now they're getting good. We've got a kid in our neighborhood that chopped down one of his bag chairs and it's attached to it, so he's got. He sits down low. Get serious, we drove all the way up to Creed College behind you, but it's pretty, he's a pretty sharp kid at what he did, it's pretty neat.
Okay, Kim, do you think we could get a copy of Tippens and then maybe have that on the agenda?
Yeah, I think we had a talk about it earlier. Don't know what we can do about it. Thank you.
Other council comment? All right, uh, council, the only thing, just to, uh, tack on to Kami's comment, Scott, note, just the number of. Hours and everything that you and the guys are gonna be doing here. Oh, you probably already started this week. I saw the street sweeper going, what, about six o'clock this morning, so. It's everything you guys are doing this week to help with that, uh, couldn't be done without you, so, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
In advance, everything. All right, that, now we'll jump back up to item seventeen, the closed session, so, uh, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I will move to go into closed session.
All right, uh, Duncan?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right.
Did you hear, did you hear, did you hear Steve wrote in hole in one?
No.
Did they? No, that, when he was up in Wisconsin.
Really?
Fifty-six yards.
Not easy to do when he moves us in.
I'll be there.